So we'll get started with the meaning of the Great Barrington Planning Board. For Thursday, May twenty-third. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Dealey's March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three order. Revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body, this meeting of the planning board will be conducted both in person and by a real participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. And our parties are the right or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person or may attend remotely by following the instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. There are some other words that we should say, but we don't have the rest of the agenda. Let's see. I will care for this. It's just the first page, that's alright.
You're struggling. Thank you though. How are you?
Do you want it on hand?
It's alright, I'm pulling it up first. I don't think so though. Maybe I'm pulling it up, maybe I'm not pulling it up. Let's see. We got to that. Okay, and then pursuant to. MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-F, after notifying the Chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a public meeting at a public body. Of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the medium, the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up. To the extent permitted by law and per Section two forty-one-one of the Town Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board. On any item that requires a vote at a time before the board votes on that item, such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponents of an item is permitted to have. Alright, so since we are waiting for a couple more board members, thank you. Thank you, we will go ahead and we will start with the four main. Sorry about that, Patrick. But we'll try and keep things moving because it's warm in here today. Oh, okay, you're getting all nice and toasty and humid. Alright. It's going to be.
Hey, my name is Patrick McAlvin, I'm the surveyor representing back water year of the LLC. Owns property at two sixty-one State Road, which is Route twenty-three. And it's just a little east. And on the north side with the intersection of Laurel Street. And currently they own two lots there and what you're trying to do is reconfigure it into three lots. When you're gonna have lot one, which will exist on five. Five two. And then lot three.
Four ones outside of that, right?
Yeah.
And so it's R one B and.
Sixty-five feet.
Sixty or sixty-five? And it, frontage or width?
Width.
And the width is measured at the building line?
Yeah, it's back here.
Yeah, okay, so we're meeting that.
Yeah. And then you get to reduce it. Eighty percent or no, sixty percent or something. Can we just do it by twenty, twenty? Frontage can be eighty percent, right? Frontage can be eighty percent.
Okay. So it's the forty-eight, eighty percent? Yes. Sorry. Okay, so we have three zoning compliant lots, we have a, a motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay.
Endorsed.
Endorsed, we have a second, thank you, Malcolm. If any further discussion? All in favor? Fine. Okay, unanimous, if you have any copy, we will find it.
I do, this is one of the questions.
That's okay.
All those. It was, sorry.
What's that? I just need one of those.
I think this is the first one to go left.
Yes.
But I didn't knock on the door.
Double dare you.
Twenty-third, five, twenty-three, twenty-four. What? No, I'm sorry. And do we need most, another copy? Chris, do we need another copy?
No.
Did you need another copy?
I tried to. Use it in there. Well. I know.
Just something to do.
I only need one.
Right, and we just need two, so you may have these two back, we're wrapping paper. And you can have this one as well. You haven't gotten a gift from us or that?
With the ready of the next thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Alright, let's see, what can we move on to? I'm gonna melt the paper, I'm asking where it is. Darren instead, he'll be here in a minute.
And you couldn't.
Yeah. A candidate for a real lot?
Sorry, what?
Would this have been a candidate for a real lot?
No, they didn't need it.
Yeah, they didn't need it.
They didn't need it.
But if they.
Well, then it would have.
That's what.
It would have compromised their ability to get to lots.
Right, you can't have two real lots?
Well, they didn't leave it.
Yeah.
They had the frontage for both lots.
Yeah. Right.
So that's a rubber stamp.
So if they, if they, then they would have had it.
Okay, let's see, so we could do the minutes, that's true, so, and we have a motion to approve as amended.
Uh, so moved.
Thank you, Malcolm.
Get amended minutes.
Yeah, we don't think they have it again.
I thought you did send them back, no, they were perfect?
No, I didn't amend them.
You did not amend them.
I didn't attend the meeting.
Alright, we have a motion for the minutes.
Uh, yes.
So move, Malcolm, uh, do we have a second? I guess all second.
There's only two people voting unless.
No matter, well, you have two out of three voting, it's fine, okay.
Uh, okay.
You have a form?
We do have a form, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
I'll pass.
Okay, interesting. Can we take up the site plan item? Okay, alright, then we'll move on to site plan review for three twenty maple.
Trying to get it.
Oh, good, I'm glad that you're delayed as well then, so we'll. Sit tight. Everyone got the packet that Chris sent us?
Did you mute your own device there, Nick?
I'm gonna try. It says that it's muted.
Hi, Jeremy.
Says that it's muted.
And turn your computer speaker off.
You're on my recording. Was that on?
We, yeah.
We are.
Andrew.
Ryan, come and sit over there.
Of course, yeah.
No, I see.
This was the special permit.
This special permit has been granted.
Are there any conditions on this special permission?
I seem to have lost you, I apologize. I'm happy to hear.
You're on top of it.
The select member.
You're on top of it.
See what trees are gonna be cut? Is that?
And I want to be able to share screens. We have more.
I have too many, I am intrigued. I like stage two. Do you want more?
I only have a page two again. It's only fifteen page long.
Chris, could you say again, there were no conditions on the special thing?
Are we ready to discuss? It was.
Well, well. Yes, I think we're ready to discuss, but just in terms of giving Nick a few minutes to go.
The Select Board discussed in its finding, discuss conditions related to trees and screening the butter's properties.
Okay.
So I anticipate what. The architect will discuss today with you on the site plan. Among other things is the tree planting plan. Which you'll see is the one that has been developed for the Select Board's. Special permit and in cooperation with the others.
Okay, great, thank you.
Was the visit by the Select Board members to see what trees were going to be cut down, was that part, was that a condition or just?
The Select Board did that before it issued its special permit, so it went on site to review the situation. Before it made its final decision. Does that, anybody can see it, makes sense?
It, it, it does, but I read in the special permit memo in the packet here, it seems to indicate the. Visit from the Select in the future.
Well, listen, Nick, update us then.
I can summarize it if you'd like.
Okay.
Just, I really appreciate you caring this evening, perhaps a little bit, but over here in the normal, and. I appreciate that.
Sure.
So. I think you said, I'm sorry, my name is Nick Elton, I'm from Westwood, we're serving as the architects. For proposed thirteen thousand one hundred and fifty square foot addition to the Timberline Heights. Long-term care facility, which is a long-term care facility for people with. Traumatic brain injury, it's the only facility of its time in the Burcher, in Burcher County. And we're here today. What prompted this series of hearings is that this required a special permit. Because there is no place within the town of Great Barrington that permits the use of a nursing facility of this kind. And it received previously a special permit in two thousand and fifteen. After the fact, approximately forty years after the fact. And now to do the submission, we had to do it a second, so.
Okay.
And I did present this before, so.
No, I think if you can just cover the changes since last time you were here, and I think we looked through the packet, but that would be really helpful.
I think working in reverse order. Because most recently, three weeks, twenty-one days. We presented to the Select Board and they voted to provide a special permit. And stipulation was that we. Can you see my cursor up there?
We can, yeah.
So we met with all the others that are to the south and west. Because they voiced a concern about being able to see it considering it was completed. And we, we met with all the others. They had buttered three fifty, three seventy. And I'm sorry, I don't know the actual third one. We met with them all and at the behest of the Select Board. We had the perimeter of the site, of the construction site marked. On the, on the actual site. And we also marked all the trees to be removed. In the process of marking all the trees to be removed, which I can show you that drawing if you like. Which was originally stated to be fifty-seven trees. We determined that twenty of those trees were either dead or strongly distressed. We had a progress come in and mark this tree. And so, I mean, that didn't change what we were gonna do, but. And we also determined that there was, that's seven, nine trees. That we felt that we could probably say, even though they were in the construction area. Like creating tree wells and that kind of thing. But. Candidly, I don't think the others. Cared much about whether we preserved trees that we previously accepted or uncut. They were more concerned about. Screening on the southwest corner of the site. And so we proposed to change all the trees that were on southwest corner, which is where my cursor is shown. Along here and along the south side, first of all, to moderately increase the number. Along that edge. The trees that you see in this ring that are not new trees are trees that we're proposing to preserve. So as you can see, there's a marking here, which is for a tree wall. To allow the trees that are in this area to be preserved. And we presented that to the others. The trees that we had originally stipulated. Were seven to eight foot conifer trees, they were a mix of white pine, cypress and cedar. And. They requested. Actually during the hearing, which I didn't expect. They came in and said, we expect, we would like. To have all the trees being. Four to six inch caliber. And I'm not a landscape architect. So I said, okay, I think that's definitely acceptable. However, the next day, my landscape architect made it clear to me that conifers are not sold by calibrating, they're sold by.
Oh, really?
And that I would to try to get a five, five inch caliber.
Be thirty feet tall?
Twenty-three. And. That didn't seem reasonable. I mean, there goes reason from the butter's point of view, but even they determined that that didn't seem reasonable. So we met with the others and they came, we came to an agreement that would allow us to put in. The number of trees that we showed here, instead of seven to eight feet between twelve and fourteen feet. And there were also originally, right where my cursor is shown right here. There were two trees that we thought we could save, but we. In the grading process, we determined that we probably could not save it because that's. New bridge are about five feet above. Where those trees are and that's just too big a tree to. It didn't seem like it was likely to survive. So we added two more trees, which was acceptable to the butter. Frankly, I don't think they've concerned so much with the southeast corner because their houses are damn. Way down, off, off the screen. So. And. And they have. Shown by responding to an email that I believe Chris has seen. That said that what we're proposing here is acceptable, they asked for one additional requirement. They ask us to put in four trees. There is a service road on the site in this area. For what they call green giants, seven to eight feet. Which is a little bit lower on the site. With the locations being placed between myself and the others during construction. And we accepted that, and that's why that's added in here, and you can see it says. To be discussed with, to be placed with the landscape architecture artifact during construction. And they sent an email verifying that that was acceptable. So that this entire revised landscape plan was an acceptable solution. Obviously, the changes that have been made here are all changes, they'll be required by then or. I think some of them were in response to some of the concerns that. You, really. So we started to concentrate more trees towards the west. Because if you might recall. What is Nelson particularly? Gave us a photo that showed that I could see light. And I have. You can try and see if I can get there. One second, please. So. Here's, alright. This is, was prepared in response to requests made by your, by your board. There were questions about. There were questions about. The cut and fill. And at the time. In fact, I think you should have hard copies of that response.
It was in our packet?
It was in your.
Yes, sir.
So we, we showed you the calculations of the cut and fill. However, in the interim, we have figured out a way to reduce the amount of export. We have figured out a way to be able to use the material that when you excavate into backfill and other areas of the site. It's not quite neutral, but it's very close to being neutral. So that we are closing to virtually exporting nothing. And if for some reason you want a further explanation, Michael Vessier is attending remotely, he's willing to come in, if you'd like to do that. Why don't I just want to sort of balance it, that's acceptable. So. You also asked that we provide some pedestrian markings. So that people that are walking on the area of the new entrance, which is right there, right here. So we now are showing all this area in stripes. As a striped walkway. To alert people to the fact that people might walk. So this is if people are walking from the general larger parking lot, they can, when they get to this point, they can walk along here. Or if they're in this particular handicap spot, there's a way they can walk across. I think that was one concern you asked us to try to address. Then you also asked us to try to show the. Cross-section from. Maple Isle, a little bit further to the west. Which we did in the site. But at the time that we did this, we actually didn't know the heights of the trees. And we have now determined that the average height of the trees. In the area that we're cutting. Is seventy-seven feet. So actually this did not represent tallness trees. But it does demonstrate that visually. You will not be able to see. The addition, at least when the trees are leafed out. And I, but I think now the additional trees that we've added at the request of the others. You will see was created another line movement. And also. I believe that. Why this isn't staying there, okay? This is a photo that I believe Ms. Nelson sent to us that showed. The lights that can be seen in the winter. As you can see, it's snow, which is very rare thing these days in Burchers. It shows. The lights, so most of these lights are lights from the windows and. In the space, so I can't really put this, but as it so happens, this particular light. Is this light that you see in this image right here, which is a floodlight. And we're proposing to remove that light. And also many of these lights will be obstructed by the new addition. Of course, the new addition will have some lights, but we are now adding this thick blanket of evergreen conifer trees along the entire. West, southwest and west, southern side. And additionally, there was a, a window in the tower that was facing towards the west. I would now move that around to the north side, so it was previously. On this side, sorry, it was previously. And I can't see this, it was previously here, we're now moved to the north side, so it's multi-visible from the street. There will be no windows in the tower that are visible from the street. And. I think this was our first pass at trying to relocate more trees towards the side to obscure the settings that we've added considerably more in reference to the. In reference to this zoning board. We've also got to the Conservation Commission, that I don't think placed any requirements. Except they ask us to remove some bases, yes, in certain areas. And finally, I believe at the last hearing we had, we showed you a series of existing site lighting on the site. That were, that the owners had proposed to maintain. They were, I don't know if I have, I don't believe I have that in this subject management vision, but you. Very thankful for me, like the quote, what bad cop. And this, that's what I had wanted, but you know, I'm just a hired gun, so. That's one of the reasons that I prepared a drawing that showed the existing site lighting, which was less night sky friendly, let's put it that way. So since that time, we have had. New set, I, this, the lighting that you see in this courtyard and here, of what we had pre-decisioned. But the lighting for the town sort of site now, all downlights. Similar to what we put in. The Windrush and those projects. And.
I think that's a big improvement, so thank you, thank you.
I think that, I, I fully agree. And. There was also a concern about the height of the tower. And we have brought the tower down about.
I think it's.
Three, three, three foot.
Two nine.
Yeah, two nine. And I'm sorry, but we're a little, little bit limited because. We need to have clearance for the elevator to be able, it needs a minimum of. Thirteen foot one in the head house. And then we needed to have clearance to be able to get out. And so we also cut the overhang by a bit. But I believe. I have another section, but it would take me a few minutes to get there, I can show it if you'd like. But with this new seventy-seven feet high, we believe that these will generally be obscured, however, of course. In the winter when there's no leaves, there, there may be some visual appearance. However, I want to say that. I believe your board visited us and we put up. Some boards here at that height. At the height of the original one, and they were totally not visible from the street. I mean, the light, I, I think there's a, there would have been a problem there, but we tried to remove. All the lighting that would be visible from the street on those sides of.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Allen?
No, I think these are good changes, you know, I.
No, I think these are good changes, uh, you know, I, I couldn't really notice the building there.
Mm-hmm.
But during the winter, you know, it's like residential lights, except for uh, one like shining red.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think it's a good, a good change and maybe it'll work.
Okay, Jackie?
I just, it's all for the good, looks really good, and I'm very thankful to you guys for all the work you did to address our concerns.
I hope to work here again.
Did you, anything for you, Jonathan?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll probably be a future patient.
I have an employee who is, uh, a black nurse. Who works in my town, you know, in, in, in the rescue. And they refer to people like these people, because most of them, like I said, I mean, she refers to them as donor cyclists, because there are a lot of these people are motorcycle.
Oh, no. Swear your helmet, I guess. All right. Jeremy, anything for you?
I sold my motorcycle.
Okay, so, um, anything else we need to know for us, or, okay. So we had run through the site plan criteria previously. Uh, and I think in doing so, we had flags, the landscaping and the lighting.
And the cut and fill.
And the cut and fill. Um, so now the applicant is, is working to balance that cut and filler, at least minimize it. So I think that's an improvement.
Well, the, the, the problem before this is that they didn't tell us what the, they cut and fill and just said it's gonna be around even.
Yeah.
It's not really that, but a thousand.
In the, in the package, I, I gave you the full cut, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I have to say that since that package, which I think was done in the middle of April, we have now, we, we thought we were not going to be able to backfill into the existing building, but now we have determined that we will be able to backfill up to a certain level.
That was the fifteen hundreds, uh, they should not moving, if you thought you were gonna have to.
Um, okay, and then, uh, obviously with the landscaping, um, they both, um, discussed the number of trees bigger than six inches that are gonna need to be removed. We understand the rationale behind that, we understand which are live trees and which are less viable trees. And then we've got a pretty robust planting plan, including some additional screening trees that are being proposed, right? And then the lighting, um, I mean, I'm grateful that the applicant was willing to take on, uh, removing that one floodlight that shines westward and then to address the really old style parking lot lighting with some new or modern, um, lighting. The only thing in the package I didn't see related to lighting was any sort of, um, fixture cut sheets. Oh, was it? I don't understand that. Uh, there's a schedule on that plan, but I couldn't zoom in far enough to see the details.
Probably the other changes, the, uh, real visible windows to the north side, so we can't see them.
That's true, there were some window changes.
Uh, as you get the lights from the.
I'm sorry, Nick, I didn't see that, if they were in fact, um, included.
There's some cut, you see here.
Okay.
About ninety percent of that package are the lighting functions.
Okay, so, so you're all set with those? I mean, you have to look at them, I understand, but.
Yeah, okay.
It should be variable lengths, there are a series of lights that are either toll lights or they're buildings, buildings have the lights. And they're, uh, uh, boost necks for the spread.
I, I think in terms of, like, I would have loved to have spent time looking at it, but just recognizing, um, everyone's schedule tonight, I think if we can just maybe consider, well, I mean, the applicant has a conform with six point four, I don't know that we need to make it a condition, but there are design standards uh, regarding lighting, so.
Yeah, also you don't like.
So that being the case, do we have, um, a motion to approve site plan?
No.
Thank you, Jonathan, thank you, Malcolm. Um, does anyone online or in the audience have any questions about that? Being none, um, all in favor? Can you pose? All right, unanimous. Thank you again for the, the revisions and the work you did on the plan.
Appreciate it, thank you so much for taking.
Sure. Are you off to another board?
No, I'm.
I'm the senator, you're up.
Uh, yeah, this one.
Okay, now you wanna reorganize?
Now we should reorganize, yes. So we'll move quickly to reorganize.
We get up and walk on.
No, let's not play musical chairs. Um, let's see, so. Do you wanna be the chair?
The chair?
Seriously. No, I want you to be the chair. Comes with this, this nice little.
Which apparently I need to start using.
Well, it does taste like.
All right.
Are you willing to take it on?
I'm willing to take it on, sure. If someone wants to nominate me.
I'll nominate the brandy.
Oh, damn, I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Can I vote either way?
All in favor? Thanks, guys. Um, and who did you want to be vice chair?
You can, so moved.
Jonathan moves and Jeremy seconds, all in favor? All right, do you post? Okay, and Clark? Jonathan, do you wanna still be clerk?
It's a heavy lift, for sure.
So we nominated, um, so Pedro nominated and Jeremy seconded, all in favor, I.
I'm sorry, this, who was it?
Uh, Jonathan for clerk by Pedro and Jeremy. We're, we're really mixing it up this year. Okay, um, do we have to make a motion for all the appointments, or can we just reassign them as per last year? Unless somebody doesn't want their appointments.
So, well, let's just put it into the record, your delegate who works your regional planning commission is.
Is Pedro.
Your alternate recommendation. Which is an appointment in the select board, it was.
No, and that's the president.
Uh, your representative to the CPC is Jeremy. Representative to the DAC is Jackie.
Yeah.
And the late master of the task force is Brandon. So that's late, could move.
So moved, so, uh, second, Jeremy seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Any vote?
I'm sorry, oh, it's, it's.
Jonathan and Jeremy. Thanks, Kim. Sorry, that's a sloppy process. Okay, excellent, well done, everyone. Um, so we'll move on to item five, special permit public hearing for twenty Castle Street. This is a special permit application to planning board from Zach Culbreath on behalf of Castle Street Firehouse LLC. Seeking to deviate from the requirements of section six point four point six of the zoning bylaw in order to install upward shining lights on the host tower, the former fire station at twenty Castle Street in Great Barrington, continued from April twenty-fifth. We need a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved, second.
Thank you, uh, all in favor? All right, can you post? Okay, so public hearing is open?
For the record, now, Chair, two members were not present, I stand down for the neck and Vader Pachano. Both have listened to the recordings and filed that acknowledgement, Tom Clark and Ken with Spain, goodness here.
Great, thank you very much. All right, thanks, guys, for doing that homework. All right, Zach, you wanna introduce yourself for the record and give us your update?
Yes, hello, my name's Zach Culbreath, I represent Castle Street LLC. Um, and I'm here before the board, uh, seeking permission to install uplights on host tower. Uh, um, newly refurbished, for the process of refurbishing. Firehouse. By Castle Street. Um, the revisions to the documents are essentially a reissuance of the, um, proposed exterior elevations with my corrections for the, the cup sheet specifications, uh, so that it's all.
So that they match, yeah.
Through. Um, and I've also submitted a lighting analysis candle. Or keyboard.
Candle.
Terminology on these things is pretty, I think, or candela curve, analysis of the proposed.
So this goes to the question that we had the last time about how much of the architecture would act to cut off the lights? Yes. All right, so.
Have submitted these to.
Do you want to remind the word, just the request here is for this uplighting on the tower?
So the request is for permission to install uplighting on a tower to highlight that we constructed, uh, tower top. Um, and in the previous hearing, um, it was requested that we illustrate how much of the proposed light is being, I guess spilled out over onto the night sky. Uh, and how much of the lighting is indeed in fact being obscured by the building or captured by the building inside. Um.
Did you happen to speak with a lighting manufacturer? Do they make any kind of shield for it, where you can just have that portion of light cut off at the fixture itself and only the portion that extends? Um.
I didn't speak to wax.
Okay.
Um.
I'm just curious more than anything.
I was using the available um, IES documentation that they provided on their website.
Okay.
Um, that's what that diagram represents.
Okay.
So are you looking at that, thinking, if we change the angle, get it?
Well, that was the question we had previously, right, was is this an adjustable fixture where it could be tilted towards the building so that they could achieve the illumination they're looking for? But not have any over lighting, um, spilling, and so the, the point we came to, I think, if I recall correctly at the last meeting, was that they were gonna take a look at how that light casts vertically and then we could see what we're seeing now in terms of what, what is spilling, um. Does anyone have any questions, Sebastian?
Uh, I'm trying to figure out the, the, what I'm seeing, I agree. Uh, we're looking at the, uh, uh, over candela.
Yeah.
Shard that shows most of the light on the, uh, um, on the bright side, which is same as the building side, very, I mean, smaller than the light, it would miss the building basically.
That's right. Yeah. Because of the orientation of the fixture toward the building. I mean, if you take a pure vertical section, more than that, more than fifty percent of the light falls to the building side of that vertical axis.
And, and I think in this case, and Zach, maybe you can speak to it a little bit, the way the corn is.
Corbling.
Corbling is, it, you know, it flares out, so it does create an opportunity for.
It captures a bit more, I mean, with the specification of the tilted fixture, or rather tilted lens, the fixture itself is not tilted, but the lens is oriented toward the building. Um, with that, plus the, the, the corn is at the top, it captures, um, I gave you all the help with the, the document.
Okay.
You mean the ones you sent us, we have.
Yeah.
The shape of it is funny, though, huh? Like, it's that kind of heart-shapedy thing.
Yeah.
Like in the middle, like.
So, right, that's a.
Uh, that's difficult.
If you look at enough of these things, yeah, so a lot of them tend to look like this. And so that, that's a, if you take a section through the light fixture itself, oriented perpendicular, perpendicular to the building face. If you take it the other way, it's a similar shape, but it's, uh, symmetrical.
Ken, so I think this is helpful on understanding that, like, roughly a third, and it's three fixtures total, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so three fixtures total, approximately a third of the light from the fixtures is going to spill away. Can you remind us of the hours that these lights will be on?
Um, only from dark to eleven P M.
Okay, so it's a limited amount of time from dusk to eleven P M, then they would go on. How are those being controlled? Is it just on a timer? Was there like an optical eye that turns on at dusk, okay? What other persons do you guys have?
Um, I think this is exactly why we have a special permit provision in the bylaw. When there are special buildings and special circumstances, and we mentioned two of them.
Okay.
Uh, especially given the effort that they've taken to, uh, to, you know, comply with the, you know, limiting light escape in the sky.
Okay.
Any questions? Yeah, Judge, is this working for you? I mean, does this solution satisfy what you'd like to see on the tower?
Yes, I think it very much, you know, fits the architectural vision of what we're trying to do with the lighting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Good question. Anything you have, Pedro?
I'm, you know, I, I'll just point out that along Main Street, there's St. James Place, Berkshire Block, the Flying Church, and all the way at the end, the Manings all have uplighting that is significantly brighter than this. If I'm, if I read your cut sheet correctly, this light is less than thirty-five, equivalent to less than thirty-five watts.
Yeah.
So, you know, the circumstance kind of reminds me of the the slideboard giving away liquor licenses, where we already had a bunch of liquor licenses out there. And there was a, you know, question of whether or not we should issue another one, I mean, we've already got a precedent for it. And I also have to say that, you know, sometimes we have to really kind of think about the the shape and the form of our town, particularly at night. Um, you know, this kind of lighting gives a, a feeling and ephemera to the town that I think is super important. Um, it, it provides a sort of light litness that the town does need, you know, at night. And it accentuates, in this case, as is the case, I think, with St. James and with the Marvel Block, it accentuates the historic architecture that we have in town, that I think also has an import for us culturally.
I like this, I like the fact that it's, it's elegant, it's, and it's appropriate to the building, it's not too bright. And, yeah, it'll make me happy as I walk by the building and get appreciated, and I'm not being overwhelmed by light, it's just.
You know, and I'll add just one other thing, that I, I believe that the, the way that you're dealing with the alleyway, it will turn that whole section of town into a much more pedestrian uh, heavy, or at least have more activity there than that mound, so having this kind of effect in that location, I think, can only add to safety and add to the overall enjoyment of that section of town and the town in general, I mean, I think it's, it's a, it's a total plus.
Derek?
Is it gonna stay the same color, the lights? There won't be changes?
For the holidays. Rainbow effect.
No, I was thinking more for holidays.
Uh, we haven't talked about covered chain lights. We're intentionally selecting a, a warmer um, and a more incandescent or halogen temperature, twenty-seven hundred versus, like, so very light, you know, the speed.
Right, right.
No, it's just not Seattle, I think he was worried.
Okay, Jonathan?
Uh, well, I would like to see the, uh, alternative lighting plans that you developed before we decided on this.
Um, this was pretty much it.
So you knew that this required a special permit and you could have done other lighting on there that wouldn't require a permit?
We, well, the previous iteration was actually more landscape uplighting to highlight the structure, um, addition, and those have all been stripped out, uh, based on.
But I'm focused on these three lights.
No, I realize that. Um, we looked at, uh, trying to capture the effect of the architecture with downlighting and we're not successful. Um, I can.
Do you want it, just for Jonathan's benefit, since he wasn't at the last meeting, I know he reviewed the record, but I believe we had some discussion because I, I had a similar question at the last meeting, um, about other options for trying to illuminate some of that architectural detailing?
And as I recall, the line that was submitted. Uh, yeah, I think.
So these are downlit versions of the same design.
Uh-huh, so you did have some.
Well, I think these are terrible, personally, architecturally. I think these are terrible personally, architecturally. Um, which is why I wasn't planning on presenting them.
Since some people are just listening and, uh, you know, not everyone is seeing these on screen. Do you mind just describing each one? Uh, okay, so you've got three alternatives here. The camera is actually right. Yes, the third.
So this is the submission.
But it doesn't seem to, it's kind of any of the fancy record up there.
Well, if you look closely, it highlights the corbling here and then arches underneath. Here, it's a bar light on the top. Black bar. So there are these outriggers that would kind of hurt like mount a uh, a bar of downlight that from from ground level, you can you can't see that as much here, so it's shrouded it so that it projects only back to the building. You can get to look at those during the day. But yeah, they've become these wings um, out the buildings during the day. Um, and then this other one was similar fixtures to what's being proposed on the sidewall, also similar to the lights that are on the um Buckloft building. And again, it's it's just a very different effect from than we were going for. So it was studied and determined that the course forward would be to apply for the special permit and I hope to have achieved what we're trying to achieve as opposed to the compromise. Um, in discussions with the owners, I think if the kind of more architectural lighting as proposed isn't proved, we likely just abandon our lighting altogether.
I said a question, then, sure.
Yes, please.
Uh, Zach, were there any considerations or conditions placed by the State District Commission relative to the lighting, either the need for it? Need to avoid it, the type? Anything else?
No, there's not.
Okay, nothing that plays into any choices that you're presenting there. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, board members, any other questions in in light of this alternative?
I do have a question.
Yes.
So Zach, you've shown these W eights in that planting bed? And then W eights are non-mounted uplights? Is that? Are you putting those on the wall? In plan, in the main plan, and I'm seeing like this is your W eight?
Yeah, they're mounted.
On the wall?
On the wall.
Okay.
Is there? I heard you say, you know, if you don't get the proposal, then you won't do any tower lighting. That always feels like putting a gun to a board's head and so I love that, but if there is a rationale behind it that can help us understand, is it, you know, what informs that decision? That lighting on the tower would be abandoned if you don't go that route with those three fixtures?
Um, it's a design choice. The aesthetic of the architectural lighting versus the downlighting is enough of a distinction um, aesthetically that.
You just don't want it.
We just don't want it.
Is it just, is it also having the lights in those places on the downline?
Yeah, it has a lot to do with the the objects you see in the silhouette of the building um, during the day. I think there's elements of how that works architecturally, that's yeah, I mean, none of these choices, I get.
Uh, can you explain um, option with smaller downlights up in the tower? And how that is architecturally less desirable? Cause I I mean, to me, that seems to capture what you wanted to capture in terms of um.
Doesn't hit the arches?
It doesn't hit it, so it's
Arch is just the light, like the light source now.
Oh, you think it's this like window arch that's the the thing that's being captured? I thought it was the detailing at the top of the shower they were trying to capture.
Yeah. No, but but in that one, it's below the like it's within the detail, right? And so it's shining down from that into the.
I I hear what you're saying Pedro about, there's tons of precedent for this, but the overlit nature of downtown is sort of why we decided to put design standards in the code um, to try and bring the overlit aspect down. I mean, Main Street's way over that, as far as I'm concerned. There's two different levels of street lighting and then there's all sorts of building lighting and I personally think it's it's too too much. I mean, Jonathan, to your point, I agree with you, but given the sort of limited proposed nature of the time of operation, I could, I could I could, you know, I could see what the applicants want to do and if we're limiting the uplighting based on time. You know, I could see that that's a reasonable compromise using a warm light and they're gonna reduce the number of hours that it operates. Um, so I guess unless we have more comments, we should open it up to the public to see if there's any public comments.
You, you, I just have like a side comment, like a lot of times we spend a lot of time doing this and then once we, it's up and we see it, then we're like, what happened to what they have proposed? And like we have, and like we have as a board have no, there's like no coming back to us later and just for us to check off on it. And I know that that's not this, but I wonder, because like some of these signs that like we sign off on some some of these and then like they appear and they're very different and like.
That's unfortunately not an issue we're gonna solve tonight, but it is, we, as you know, we raised it with the select board and we've you know, engaged with the building department and asked for enforcement. I I think that's what we can do.
But I, but I wonder if there's like some mechanism that like like we could have them come back, like not not, but we could have them.
Let's put a pin in that. Um, all right, is there anybody in the room that has a comment? Um, yes. Go ahead.
Fifty two Main Street, um, I'm probably one of the very few people in Great Barrington who was excited when most of the trees came down uh, in Main Street because it opened up all the architecture. You actually saw the tops of the buildings, the 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 details of the buildings and I'm hoping that the trees that are out there now are, get stunted, absent. Um, also being an electrician, fan of light, but I think with this firehouse over here, it's, you know, it's a beautiful building, it's been restored. Uh, I came in during halfway through this conversation also, but I think the um highlighting the details of it is a pretty amazing thing. Uh, I think they're gonna insult the timer or whatever that might have been discussed. Uh, is is a good compromise. And and I know like dark sky stuff and everything like that, but in a in a city center, I think that kind of is deferred. I think it's more in a heavy residential area and on the outskirts of our town that that would stand true. I think, as you said, like the 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 keys were already kind of given away on the street, right? So it's friends to the, um, so I wouldn't want to see one of our oldest uh, buildings that have, that has been restored, that could have been plowed over, uh, get that taken away. So that, that's my two cents for a little bit.
Sure, thank you. Anybody else?
I have another question, but after they speak.
Sure, sure. Let's just see if there's anybody on, is there anyone online that wanted to speak um, on the matter of the special permit for uplighting at the fire station? Just raise your hand and Chris can unmute you. Okay, seeing no hands raised, Jackie?
My question is, um, what's the effect of the Mahawi's marquee on the church at night? If there, if it's on the firehouse, yeah. I mean, I'm just wondering because you talk about.
Warm glow on the
It's a hat.
East side of the tower.
I mean, that's it, it doesn't.
It's not. I mean, it's a bright piece of architecture, so it does cast.
It's a lot of concern to you or it's just, it's a, it lives there, so.
Yeah, no, I don't.
It's a neighbor best.
Yeah, it's not.
That's not a concern.
Um, are there any other board reports that we need to consider?
I can't recall what you heard last time, but I'll briefly review the board of health. Um, I'd like to recommend planning board of those time limits to the length of the nighttime illumination. They suggested shut off around ten eleven. Select board had a positive recommendation adding that any lights installed should have timers. Uh, and the planning board should set the suitable hours for those timers for the lights to go off at night. Conservation commission terminated and no jurisdiction on the matter. And no comment. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we need to discuss findings under ten point four. Um, and so going through ten point four, those are social, economic or community needs that are served by the proposal.
Sorry, can I say one more thing?
Oh, sure.
Um, and it doesn't have anything to do with these uplights, but I double checked the dark sky provision or design kind of constraints around the proposed floodlights. And as I changed the catalog and the drawings, um, but also for the the cut sheet that was submitted prior, when they're mounted down, they do
Meet the full And that's how they'll be mounted, mounted. Thank you. All right. Okay, yeah, so then under ten point four, so social, economic um, and community needs served by the proposal. Anyone, anyone, I guess Pedro highlighting his work building?
Yeah, I think, I think that people highlight, you know, cultural heritage. It's important to, you know, to have in mind as we travel around our town.
Um, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Uh, I don't think any of the uplighting is really there for safety purposes. It's more just for aesthetic purposes, so I don't think that implies. Um, adequacy of utility and other public services.
Five watts.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna kill our grid to light the building. Um, number four, neighborhood character and social structure. Um, I think it's fair to say it is consistent with the illuminated character in the area. I don't think it's a big deviation. It's certainly not the only illuminated building. Any other thoughts, sir?
But those didn't come for special.
Agreed. Agreed.
I don't think you can use that from there.
No, but I, I do think it enhances the uh, the neighborhood character. I think it enhances the beauty of the town.
I don't know if it detracts from the neighborhood character. I almost might work from the, from the other end. Um, impacts on the natural environment. Um, with the three lights, they are gonna lose just over a third of the light into the night sky that's not there currently. Um, I think that does have an impact, but I do think it's somewhat mitigated by the uh, timer.
And the overhead, the look on the dome.
Yeah, I'm just saying that thirty percent is going regardless.
Might only be fifteen or twenty percent.
Yeah, that's what the the model shows. Um, and then potential fiscal impacts on town services, tax base and employment. I don't think that one's a football. All right. Um, so next we need a vote to close or continue the public hearing. Um, I entertain a motion to close public hearing. Thank you, thank you. Uh, motion by Pedro and a second by Malcolm. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Okay, discussion and vote to grant or deny the special permit. Um, entertain a motion to grant a special permit with the condition that um, the light fixtures be installed as shown in the model and that they um, operate no later than eleven P M.
And and chairman's specific finding that's required under ten point two.
Yes, please.
Which is that the adverse effects of the control will not outweigh beneficial impact for the power neighborhood. In doing specific characteristics of the site. Separating motion, yes.
Do you need to amend the motion?
I amend the motion.
Include for this, include the finding under ten point.
Include the files in the ten point for.
Do you even live in the proposals, do you want to pull it down?
Um, I believe the color temp is shown on the plans as twenty seven hundred, so I mean, feel the plan is great.
That's what the cheat says, the cut sheet says.
Yeah. No, but I thought that was so, so that was good. All right, so we have a motion, a second. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Hearing done, we don't have to do a roll call, do we?
You do.
We do have to do a roll call. Okay, Malcolm.
Yes.
Pedro. Derek. Jonathan.
No.
Randy, aye? All right. Thank you very much.
That's great.
In case you were curious, do you want your rendering? No, you do not have to come back and see us for this project. Yeah, I think we're all set then. Chris, do you need anything else from Zach?
No, so at this point, we'll try to reduce the discussion and decision to writing um, for the next few days, five to ten days, we'll have the board sign it. It'll be issued, um, then it'll be a twenty day period after that, the print is valid.
Do you need these supplemental renderings for the record?
Uh, I have the sheet A two eleven. Was there something else?
It's really good to have that for the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to leave them with?
I can leave them and email you video.
Okay, great, thank you guys. Thanks for working with us on this. It is warm. Does anybody need water?
Yeah, last meeting.
Thank you. I know, I know, it's crazy. It's certainly dead. All right, so let's see, we were um, about six thirty, we were going to pivot to a joint meeting with the Husatonic um, improvement committee. Thank you guys for your patience. Um, I don't know if we can reconfigure or if you guys wanna, you should come sit around the table here or we can. I was gonna come back, just in light of Husatonic folks being here, yeah.
Well, not all of Husatonics.
Committee, there are a number here in the room with us, um. And there are a few joining online.
So we should, um, the H I C should officially call order and take its roll calls.
Sure.
And all votes under this would have to be.
And then do you need to um, turn these folks from Husatonic that are joining virtually?
I know, that's there, I'm there, that's.
There's Ben. Hi Ben, you can hear us?
Smile Ben.
Is it my glasses or is that Scott got three Ts at the end of it?
Two Ts.
Okay, it is my glasses. I need to get them changed apparently.
It's not your clock.
So we need to call our meeting. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so um, I call this meeting to order and um, we'll do a roll call, babe. Eric.
Eric, you're up here.
Here, Bev is here, Scott.
Here.
You're here.
Here.
Beverly Nars.
Kim's our recording secretary. And then online. You can see those, you've got those, okay, great, alright. And thank you very much, so um, Angela, do you wanna just frame up the discussion? You and I have had a couple of communications, but first of all, we're super excited that the Husatonic Improvement Committee and the Planning Board. Can initiate some conversations. Um, and we hope that this can be a lot of back and forth, um, and we're. We can be a resource to you guys as you're considering other things in Husatonic, um, you know, definitely, let's keep the communication channels open, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
So um, the town commissioned a study of the former Cook's Garage, which um, I've shared with all of you. And it, and our committee has looked at it. It's quite comprehensive, um, and it took many months to um, prepare that study. Um, so we've looked at it um, from the Husatonic Improvement Committee. And we've been asked by the select board to make a recommendation for that building. And that building's been empty for a while, it's not in great repair. It's landlocked, although there's a right of way on one side of it. Um, it's right on the river, I don't know if all of you have seen it, um, some of you were there this afternoon when we did a site visit, but it's right on the water. Um, and there's also an artisanal well at one end of the property. The question is, we don't know who. Owns that or has the rights to that water. We do know that there's a lot of water coming out, it's like three hundred gallons a minute. It's really pure water, um, but it can't be used for public drinking supply because it's too close to the railroad tracks and it's too close to a state route. So um, even though we kind of got our hopes up and when we heard clean water, um, that's not a, a solution for us. So um. We're just here to discuss, like, what you think could be done with that building. And I'll, I'll emphasize that we all understand that housing is a crucial need in our community. Um, and when we looked at the reuse of the Husatonic school. Um, our recommendation was that it would be housing and some mixed use space. And it's ending up being just housing, which is fine, so we'll have some, we'll have eight new units of housing in Husatonic shortly. Um, so we, we, we understand that that's the case, and would you, anyone from the committee like to add to that, feel free?
I guess, uh, you know, a series of questions I'm sure will be flowing your way, but. Just looking at the property and the type configuration of it, um, just trying to have creative, open mind about it. Cause I think um, myself. Uh, been staring at the building for quite a long time, uh, I, when I first went on my own. Um, I rented a small space in there and it was my shop, and that was thirteen something years ago, and it rained inside that. Um, so I, I understand the. The, the. The structural issues that are going on with the ceiling and stuff like that, but I, I wonder. The value, um, you know, if somebody came in, money was an object, which obviously it is, but it, um. Like, the flexibility that would be had there, um. I, I reviewed the um, email that you sent with the different zoning overlays, but like, certain things, um. Is, is just like, what's to the extent if somebody was to get creative, um. As far as how many floors could, could part of the building be torn down and multiple floors added to a different section of it? Uh, to create parking or something like that, um. And, and then just, uh, i- if any of the new bylaws that were just passed at town meeting, how that would affect that particular space. That by right and, and things like that, um. Those are kind of the things I was looking to have discussions on, and um. And then, yeah, just in general, how somebody could make that space work as a, by the, by the. The planning board's eyes of like a mixed use. Building, that was a possibility, just.
Scott or Ben? Beth, and, and, do you wanna add anything?
So just to echo that, I, I mean, I think it would be a great mixed use space, um, there definitely is a housing shortage, I believe. Um, you know, looking at that today, we climbed up, uh, you know, a, a, an exterior staircase and. You know, the roof's not in great shape, but there's a, quite a, quite a wonderful view. So, you know, I wonder about the footprint of that building. You know, being a four-story building or a five-story building, or a, a lot of story building. Because if there was, if there was a mixed use and there was some commercial uses, you know, on the lower floors and some. Residential uses on the higher floors, it's a pretty nice view, um. So it would be great to see it developed, redeveloped, um, you know, my, my view is. It's not terribly historic, right, so whether it's old or not, you know, you look at it and you say. There's a whole lot of places that used to have windows that have been infilled, and i- 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 it looks like a lot of sort of. Just get by work, this isn't a Berkshire cottage or a Gilded Age, you know, property that's being saved or restored. Um. But it's in a great spot next to the river, uh, in a valley with, with hills and, and mountains all around it, so. Um, it would be wonderful for it to have a, a, a good use.
Chris, can you um, just update us in terms of. Investment the town's already made to investigate and, and then the ownership is. By the town, right, we own that parcel now?
Right, the town owns it, the town foreclosed on the property several years ago, and. Angela mentioned until the town owns that site. The town's options are. If it is is. Auction it to highest bidder for any purpose. Uh, or, as in the case of the recent sale of the Husatonic School, to develop an R F P, a request for proposals that. Um, provides some thoughts as the town's preferred uses for the site or the building. Um, and then sell on the basis of response to those preferred uses. Uh, so, those three options. And the select board, as Angela said, approached the H I C for their thoughts, ultimately, the, the select board will. Determine which way to go, whether to keep it as is, to auction it. Or to R F P it, and I think that's, you know, what we'd like to hear from the H I C and certainly. From the planning board as well, try to make that determination, and if there is an R F P, what sort of uses are. Um, possible or desirable based on what you know of. The needs of the village and of the town and the specifics of the site. The zoning, of course, uh, as this board, as the planning board knows, is very flexible in this area, the Husatonic Mill Revitalization Overly District. Can entertain quite a lot of different scenarios and uses. Um, it recognizes that lots in the mill district are very constrained as to access, as to setbacks. Um, and uh, the H M R O D in the mill overlay district. You know, its goals are preservation of historic architecture where possible, access to the river. Next use if possible, it does give some flexibility for parking. So, I think that is a good framework for future development. And some of those goals may, may. Form the basis of a, of an R F P, uh, in the future, should, should you recommend the select board to that. Uh, the well is interesting, it's an, it's a artesian uh, well, as Angela said. It, um. There's about three to four hundred gallons per minute, which is extremely productive. We don't know the source, and that specifically is why it can't be a public drinking water well. If the source is spraying up on a mountain, then that source needs to be protected. But we don't know where the source is, it could be direct drill. Below the riverbed, it's not river water, it's pristine water. Um. So because we have been unable to determine the source, even with uh, some technical assistance and locating companies. And a hundred years of history, nobody happened to see a spring house up on a mountain. We can presume there isn't a spring up there or pipes laid in, so we, in short, we don't know the source, it cannot be. A public drinking water uh, source at this time. Um, if we did know the source, it would have to be protected, if the source was in fact directly under the former Cook's Garage. The town would have to own. Most of downtown Husatonic Village in order to protect the source, so railroad in fact wouldn't be allowed within a wellhead zone. For example, so unfortunately that's. The town didn't investigate the well for commercial and industrial purposes, it's, it's pristine water, it could be used for commercial and industrial purposes. It just can't be a drinking water. Even for the building. So, cannot be a public drinking water source, which is, you know, more than, I forget the. The, the uh, category, it's more than a certain number of people for a certain number of days, it's something like twenty people for more than thirty days. So. It, it, it's being considered to be ruled out, and so. Whether or not the Department of Health, uh, uh, whether or not it could be considered as a. Drinking water source domestically for that site, only item.
How difficult is it to determine the source?
Uh, it's been impossible so far. Reports that it was drilled in the bedrock. That's what we believe it's drilled in the bedrock. Well, where's the source of the water that's coming out? Well, it's, it's probably Bedrock Springs, it's a Packerford, but. Uh, if that is the source, the short answer is the town does not and cannot. Control a radius around the source, it's impossible, the town would have to take that village. So.
And that doesn't have a doubt.
Yes. So the river mill is sprinkled. And the tenants. There, like, I was, at one point I was trying to rent the second floor there. And the tenant has to pay three hundred dollars a month. For the sprinklers, even though they never use the water. So they have to pay Husatonic Water Works three hundred dollars a month. So maybe that water could be used for sprinkler systems or something. Right, that's certainly a possibility, getting back to the ownership of the water. Uh, the rights are owned fifty percent by whoever owns this building, which is the town. And Dale. Fifty percent by the abiding property, which currently is that red metal Morton building.
So the culitans and the town.
I don't know who the current. It's, it's Ethan Hader. Name. And also, there, there was a, a gasoline spill. On the, I guess it was the Bavaria site, Bavaria mill site, but it's in front of. Uh, the red. The, the industrial building that's trying to be sold. Uh, and it's, there's a. A footprint, everything in front of that basically cannot be developed for anything that. Has anything to do with children or housing or anything. Right, there's what's called A U L, Activity Use Limitation on the abiding site, it is not on this regular site, so this site is not impacted by that. But it is in the center, so just getting back to Randy's original question, I think. The zoning is pretty flexible, um. Uh, you've heard some comments already about the location, it's, it's a beautiful location. Personally, I think the riverside architecture with the windows is beautiful, absolutely gorgeous. Rest of the architecture may be, uh, is lacking, uh, I think. In, in the static appeal and historic significance. Is there a time of engineering review of the structure and everything else? Uh, uh, thank you, the, the town has received uh, some grants. Through uh, the E P A and um, and through Virgil Regional Planning Commission's Brownfield Program to investigate the site. Where like environmental con, contamination. Uh, so the town saw a phase one and phase two, and it had a disability material survey. Did find some contamination within the building that's been taken care of in the room, there were like heavy metals in the sun within the building. Did not find any underground storage tanks, but we thought there would be fuel tanks, yeah, and that was a whole. But that was garage, but there were no fuel tanks found, so. Terms of environmental um, contamination, there's, it's not a scary sight from that. Point of view, the town has not done a structural search. Yeah, that's my big question. Yeah, inside, the, the top floors are falling in. Uh, walls seem to be in shape at the moment, but top floors are coming down quickly.
That's like Scott has a question, Danny.
So I just wanna follow up on the water, right, so you, you talked about, you know, the town would have to own half the village, but, so is that a state? Law, federal law? Um, not, not to go down a rabbit hole, but there's certainly lots of issues with water, so, um. You know, what is the jurisdiction that would make that not a viable source of drinking water?
The D E P, it's the state, it's the state D E P laws about public drinking water wellhead protection.
It's the radius that it covers around the source?
Uh, four hundred feet, probably what it. Correct, and it has no depth limit, which is goes all the way down.
But it's not four, not three sixty.
No, 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 it's just the surface.
Four hundred and all the way.
But you can't do anything that's not related to the drinking water here, within that four hundred feet. Railroad is not related to the drink water, or the road, or the road.
Where is the water being discharged now, that we know?
To, to the river.
It just flows off the site and down one of those retainers.
My point was.
That's pipe, it's. System that kind of flows into and then the next pipe, and it's.
My point is if it was greater than four hundred feet down, did it matter, it doesn't matter how far down, if not, could be.
Can I answer your question, Scott?
Well, Chris, what about uh, building heights, because the.
He nodded and said yes, that.
That answers, that answers the question, thank you.
Um, okay, so, um, where, where are you guys at in terms of. Ha- uh, having this conversation about how this building is being used, is this, are you very early in your discussion? Or have you had any sort of community visioning or anything like that, that?
Can I just?
Oh, sure.
Pause you there.
Yes.
As part of the town's technical assistance, we P A the town also received a, um, technical assistance to do a market study. These develop feasibility analysis of the building.
Okay.
Um, and that is a report that was shared in your packet, um, or Randy shared it with the planning board. For this meeting, it included a review of comparables, it included even, um. Uh, you know, rents and income expectations, uh, and the development performance, so. That's more than we had in previous redevelopment sites.
Mm-hmm.
So that gives, gives the town some idea of what possibly, what could be possible there, because of. Costs and potentially companies.
And really, to answer your question, you know, we've had it on our agenda for many months. Um, and we have had only one person from the public make a comment in writing, um, which was great, um, we always welcome that sort of. Um, input, um, but we have not really, I mean, as a group, we've spoken about it, but we have too many questions about zoning. And parking and that sort of thing, which is why we're here.
Gotcha.
And I think after this meeting.
Yeah.
We'll be able to kind of put a stake in the round of three and, and make a recommendation, because I think we've had it long enough.
Yeah.
That it's time for us to do something about it, I'm speaking out of turn, it's my own personal opinion, I don't know what the committee would like to do, but. Um, Eric's shaking his head. Um, so that's kind of where we are. Um, I have a question for Chris, because Chris, you just said. Something about the number of floors, when we looked at it this afternoon. In my estimation, it looked like two floors, is it two floors or three?
I think there's two principal floors, but there, there's a small kind of stubby tower in the back. Uh, that's like three. Yeah.
But the code would allow. So we should have one conversation at a time. So you were, because Kim can't write any of that down.
I was just saying that like the second floor, extremely tall ceilings, uh some of the areas used to have locks or, you know, so.
Yeah, and just looking at the underlying zoning, it is either.
O and H B C. The underlying zone.
Right. So it looks like. So it's probably under forty now. And one one question we had in the field, Chris, was um. Whether or not, um if if the building was deemed to be a tear down. Whether or not it could be rebuilt on its current footprint. Or.
Well, the the mill revaluation or the district can allow almost any configuration. Uh yeah, it would be able to be rebuilt. That's that entire area is likely what the Concom will call previously developed area.
Okay.
Uh and all of that area would probably be reserved as already developed and that. Redeveloped within the surface.
Yeah.
It's going to just stay within the footprint.
Yeah, the entire site would, not just the building. The entire site likely will qualify as already developed.
Might have flexibility.
What is the, what is, for context, what is the height of the Berkshire Pulse building?
Yeah, I don't know off yet.
It's less than forty feet.
I don't know. I'm not sure.
It's pretty tall.
It seems pretty tall.
Yeah, it's probably not less than forty feet.
Yeah, I don't know. Um and do we know, is there a, there's an easement that provides access back to the building?
Yes.
But is it on, is it at the driveway curput now? Because that is difficult to pull out of, as I noticed today.
The right away goes from. One eighty-three?
Yeah.
To the building.
So where the runway is. Yeah, okay.
So if as we were facing that building, it's to the left.
Yeah.
Yeah, of the Pulse building.
Okay, I just wondered if it could be reconfigured because I was. You know, just pulling out of there, I made note that the bridge uh guy rail blocks your view pretty substantially and. You know, I wanted to make the left turn out and kind of inch your nose out there and you put that. Kind of blank curve coming in the other direction. So that's a tricky spot.
Does anyone know if the town has ever approached the landowner? Of four four fourteen, which is the red one story building, to see if any of that land. Between that building and the former place garage could be. Purchased or used.
It's for sale. It's currently for sale.
The the little P, I didn't, maybe I'm misspeaking. Uh so the little. I I think it actually is two stories, but it it's right abutting the Rubener Mill. It's like attached to it, right? And I believe that's.
Which is the Rubener Mill?
Not Rubener, that's that's.
So on the, well, in the east side.
Yep.
There's just a lot of grassy area between the former Cook's Garage and Pulse and the one story industrial building. There's a strip of green.
Oh, I.
That's what I'm wondering about. Has has anyone ever?
It looks like that's part of, part of the property that the red building is on.
Yeah.
Because I've been in my head, just imagining what else is around there. Does this building become catalyst? For other development or make you want to reach out?
Yeah.
Phase one, phase two, phase three, something like that. I don't know. Yeah, I looked up the the last size of the building that is the one story new red building and it's a six acre parcel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's all in the city mountain. It's in the waterfront.
Yeah.
The two hundred.
Most of that area of of the the mill area would likely qualify as previously developed. And therefore able to be redeveloped within.
Is that the?
That's interesting.
Is that the property with the restriction or is that not?
Yes, that's.
That's that's the one, yes, yeah.
Yeah, huge limitation.
Oh, that's in front of the red building, not behind the red building. Yeah, which is sort of a parking lot now.
So yeah, so it's it's not, it's just the parking lot.
Yes.
The um the use restriction.
Which way goes right up to the tunnel building or maybe part of the building assembly.
So let's just be clear, that's not the parcel that the town has control of. So. We're sort of, we're expanding, that's what we tend to do.
Chris, to be clear, there's three uh three options for this site under zoning, right? It's industrial. It's in the H N R and D and it's smart.
Correct. So you could do virtually anything.
Yeah.
Except to open a uh riding state. Or golfers. Cemetery.
Could you repeat those three?
In it's in the industrial.
The underlying district is industrial.
Yeah.
And then it's another sonic mill revaluation overlay this year.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's another one that's not on the map.
I think it is, but it's hard to see that just how I didn't. Yeah, it's that one.
Which is a smart road that really. I would just like to add that this is a perfect example of an industrial district that could easily be reasoned.
Where's Stephen Musson? We need him.
So I did not, I did not send you that last zoning overlay and that's an interesting one. So the smart growth overlay. Uh a number of years ago, we put that um those overlays in place in a couple of areas the town. Um presented the information in town meeting and and basically was areas that are. Um underutilized currently um with high potential for building dense. Housing um because of the services that are there, so water, sewer, electric. Um. And you know, the underlying zoning and the H M R O D overlay give you a lot of flexibility. The thing about the smart growth overlay that comes with some incentives from the state. And so Windrush Commons, which is just south of Guido's, was built under that smart growth overlay. Um and so there's a monetary incentive that the state has made available. I don't know, Chris, do you know if that program is still functioning?
The the town has already benefited from the zoning of the forty hour smart growth. And has received those incentive payments already.
There was an initial incentive when we passed it and then there's a second incentive when C O's are issued.
Correct, when when certificate of access is issued, uh the town gets a a per unit. Payment for those as well. So for example, for Windrush, the town has realized that. But those have been the only C O's issued under any smart.
Right.
So so does does the ESCAD, is that we require all the units to be affordable?
No, no, it's twenty twenty percent, twenty percent.
And does the town turn around and give that incentive from the state back to a developer or does that go into the town coffers?
It could go back to a developer in order to underwrite the development of that affordable housing project. Um I believe some of it was used in that way for the Windrush site uh to upgrade the sewer. And uh to the site.
And someone today at the site visit asked if that um if the former Cook's Garage was connected to water and sewer. And I went to the report and yes, it is both.
Yeah, if, I mean, to change the use, say, from commercial to um residential would require probably more. In terms of capacity of each, I would guess, but um. The thought is that potentially under the smart growth overlay, if there's uh, you know, um. Dollars that can become available to help offset some costs that you can. Use that maybe for infrastructure upgrades or sidewalk improvements or something like that.
Right, Randy, I have a question about, I'm I'm just sitting here just. Not chewing on zoning, but I'm chewing on R F Ps and I'm wondering if you guys still have an appetite for R F Ps? And would any of this money that we've just been talking about be able to defray the cost or be put towards paying for an R F? Or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah. No, there's nothing in advance, but. Well, I think, I think Chris jumped in here, but when we did our report for the school, the Hushtank School. We then gave it to Chris and Chris developed the R F P. So that's part of your role, correct?
Right, or the the um so. The H I C recommendations on the school went to the select board, select board. Basically then asked staff through the town manager to develop the R F Ps. Right, they did not throw it back to the select board, trying to incorporate all those suggestions and.
And did you have a good res, I'm sorry, a good response from the people that you wanted to get a response?
Well, there were two.
There were twenty-two initial responses and then there were four that were kind of in play and then that was. Buddled down to two. Because I'm just, because this is on, it's such a beautiful site. And that warning you drive through Husatonic and you just think, why isn't there more advantage of the river taking? And I'm just thinking, if you had an R F P and it was, somebody saw, oh my God, I could do something in that space. You might get a more interesting subset of people with the plan.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, I would lean personally towards an R F P, but maybe like. After you do some sort of design competition, I I'm familiar with other communities that. Have had underutilized sites and they provide the framework of like. You know, we want to see mixed use and we want to see an extra story on the building or it could have an extra story. And we know we have to have offsite parking and and then give that to like a design team at U Mass. Or, you know, because they're always looking for projects and let that be chewed on through a semester and be somebody's design project, do a little design competition.
Yeah, I agree. And and what? Well, I agree with most of that. They, but I guess what I was gonna say is what what I'm looking for personally i- is just like um. How to promote the building. And 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 what I'm undecided on is is if an R F P is the right way to go or just bring, putting it out to auction. But with a lot of publicity behind it, a lot of promotion um and and just. You know, not fully informed on all the cost of it yet, but one one concern is is just what what the town would be on the hook for. If the R F P went, you know, like uh my opinion of this time school is that it was always very structurally sound centerpiece. Like it it seemed like it was well worth the money that they had to put up and the opportunity there was amazing. I thought personally felt. With with Cooks, similar, I I, you know, being along that riverside, I think anybody would love to live there, create art. Do their business, sit on a couch and talk about your problems. I think I think it has so many opportunities there too. Uh just the unknown cost of what it would affect the town. With with our, with the Husatonic School, we we did do a charrette and and at the end of the day. One of the participants in the charrette was actually part of the team that won the R F P. So that's. So it is steps like that that I want to take, uh but it's also. Uh it would be great to have everybody on board uh just for promoting possibilities and and theories and and. And just getting the word out there of what's actually possible there. And as you guys obviously deal with all the time, you know, it's just the. Uh and I commend you for it, just being able to get through all that big work of uh zoning and what's possible and special permit. And and all that, that's a lot of work. Um so I I think, you know, speaking for myself, just. Uh just looking for those creative ways, like so if we leave here today, same it, it could be. All the stories you wanted, right? Or something like that, you know, and just putting those possibilities of how to stack. And 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 that sort of stuff. And I I think that's. You know, a a good starting ground for us.
Maybe one way to look at it too is what doesn't the community want to see there, right? Like eliminate eliminate those from the beginning, like. Are people more interested in seeing that building restored or replaced? You know, because we may not have enough information yet to understand what a restoration effort might cost, but. If the roof is failing and the structural beams inside the building are failing and I don't know how much that's translated down to a first floor. Structure, you know, that, what's the flooring? Is it wood or is it dirt?
Yes, the next.
Okay, you know, so I mean, all that timber could, that could make it cost prohibitive to restore it.
Right, you have to do the structural analysis before you even come to.
Yeah.
R F Ps or anything like that.
Yeah.
Or even what you want to put.
Can we, um can, I'm sorry, Scott's got his hand raised. Sorry, Scott. You can jump in and just yell if you want. You're being very polite.
Sure, well, Canadians, uh uh so I guess I had a question just in terms of um. You know, the uses, because I think it would make sense to do a charrette or do a design or or whatever, but I think. Sort of getting to brass tacks, anybody who's gonna spend that effort or energy wants to understand. Um you know, what can we do? And we all know whether it's. You know, restoring the historic building or whether it's tearing it down and building something new, there's no parking, right? There's a small easement with a bad sight line to get onto a busy street. So maybe it would be worthwhile to spend a little bit of time to understand, I mean. Um you know, Angela forwarded a summation of some stuff about offsite parking, but I think in any use, right? Rehabilitated building or tear down rehab, et cetera. We're gonna run up against an issue of parking, right? So what? What does that look like? You know, if we get specific, like whether it's residential units, a bunch of commercial units, three more floors, forty feet high. Where do people park?
Yeah, we we have lots of arguments on this board about parking because we want to try and balance the fact that in the Berkshires, we. We use cars, you know, we always say like in Husatonic in particular, those mills were built and then the community builds up around it and people walk to work, right? But that's not necessarily the framework we're living in now. So uh I think from a zoning standpoint, we. The zoning already recognizes that the way these buildings are configured, you're, you may not necessarily be able to park right there. And so, you know, realistically, you're gonna have to probably look for some offsite parking and have. It be close enough that it's reasonable to walk to this location, right?
Can any of that, can any of that offsite parking, is that private offsite parking? I mean, listen, if you. If you're in, if you're in a large city where people live and work and walk, right? They park on the street. Um so is street parking an option or are we gonna get into, well, no, not in the winter because we have to plow, right? Because. So so that's just a question. I mean, people move their cars at eight A M in Manhattan all over the city.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, again, each use is gonna have a different demand on parking. So if this is, you know, to Eric's point, a a studio where you've got just a handful of people working in it. Maybe parking's not an issue, but if it becomes residential and it's thirty apartments. You know, you could potentially have fifty or sixty cars you need to deal with. So it's really gonna depend on your use, Scott.
Yes, so let's take that one. Let's let's take fifty or sixty cars in a residential use, right? Or some mixed use that's. Forty or fifty spaces, right?
Right.
They're not there. So is there, can you do, is street parking an offsite parking option in the zoning regulations?
So the, is it in, I don't think we have any jurisdiction on streets. That's gonna be a town regulation.
Offsite parking.
Offsite parking, yeah.
Street, you can't.
It's street.
Back calculation, right?
It's it's your jurisdiction.
That's right.
Offsite parking, not on the street, off street, offsite can be part of the special permit discussion. So with, and I, not to jump in on you, Scott, here, so. Moneybags comes to a special permit and he has fifty fifty units for this building, looking for fifty parking spaces. He would have the design of of his building.
Mm hmm.
Um and then in theory, within X amount of yards, another plot of lot of land that he bought. Or something along those lines, whether it's on one side of the street or another.
Some provision would need to be made simultaneously with the redevelopment proposal for the building to address the parking.
Yeah, I think it's conceivable that any. Substantial redevelopment and reuse of this building that would require. More parking that can be provided on site would be undertaken in cooperation, in fact, or perhaps even by. People who control and develop the budding properties as well. In other words, maybe more valuable as part of a campus redevelopment than on itself. Right, and then with with any consideration of like, all right, so there is. Right. And then with, with any consideration of like, alright, so there is fifty units there, say, uh, we, somebody brings you a proposal for twenty-five parking spaces on an embutted thing and promotes the bus that goes out past the front, would that, that be, is there consideration for that?
Yeah, what I would say is that speaking for the planning board, even on that. The planning board would love to see that site redeveloped, whether it's that building or a new building, we would love to see it redeveloped. We'd love to see housing, we'd love to see mixed use. All the things you're talking about are wonderful. And parking is not gonna stand in the way.
Yeah.
Well, isn't that, but, but special permit for parking isn't that. It's not for?
No, it's special permit for parking is point of view.
Most likely, it's part of the Husatonic Mill Revitalization Special Permit. Through, through the essentially a joint mutation of the planning board and stuff. But if they, if they opt to, to buy, to, um, to file under the Husatonic Revitalization, we're the special permit body, not the select board. So can I say something about the zoning, just so you kind of understand how it works? So the the underlying zoning, industrial zoning there, you can do anything there that's either by right or by special permits. Or, and you can't do what's not. But if you go into then and adopt the regulations for the Husatonic revitalization, you can pretty much do whatever you want there. The things that are not allowed by right require a special permit. And then the Smart Worth Overly District has a bunch of other requirements that are, that are too numerous to go into, but you would need a special type of developer, I think, to develop under that reg, those regulations.
And, and I'd suggest just to keep the conversation going and, you know, to allow you guys to go home sometime tonight if you want, uh, like, if you want to think about particular uses and you want to bounce them off of, I'm gonna volunteer, Chris, or any of us, um, we'd be happy to, you know, kick around what concepts look like and um, these guys, Jonathan and Pedro, like, have some architecture experience and I have some site development experience. And so we try and bring, and everybody else has got excellent ideas on, all the time, so we'd be happy to kind of talk through concepts.
That'd probably be nice.
So the only thing, the only caveat I would say is I would hate to see that housing be a hundred percent affordable. I would really want to see it be mixed income housing. We need more of that. Because all the affordable houses we're building is strictly affordable and that's assumption we need in ghettos and we don't need that.
So I have a question about the three levels of zoning. I was not aware, or I hadn't really thought about it, that someone could apply within only one of those categories.
You can choose.
You choose one. Okay, so can, can someone describe like what the differences are, like what, what, which, which are the advantages and which have disadvantages? And if you were gonna develop, if you had seventeen million dollars tomorrow, which one would you choose? And why?
I'd choose Chris.
I would petition this board to change the zoning on industrial, so you can do more things by right that are human people center. And, because all of our industrial districts are right next to neighborhoods and this is another perfect example of that. Then you'll, I mean, we can't go through the, all of the uses, but if you look, if you just go through the table, you'll see what you can do under those, under the I zone. And then if there's something there you can't do, like multifamily housing, you can do it under the Husatonic Revitalization Overly District.
So are you?
But that would revive in, that's a special permit and that's a, that's a, I'm gonna say, don't take this wrong way, a friendly special permit because it goes through this board.
So are you, and I'm just gonna be very brave, are you suggesting that we petition to change the zoning on that parcel?
You could petition with me, we can do it.
You have an ongoing.
The question is like, what, what can you add to, you know, if we do issue an RFP, the, the less stringent the zoning, the better, right?
That's, that's, that's the reason for the overlay.
Yeah, I think the overlay, the overlay tries to achieve that.
I meant the mill.
The mill.
Listen, you just want to change two, two items on the news table, that's it. And they're related to the I two, so an I two, which is an industrial district, you can do both of these things, which is multifamily housing by right. Or with a special permit, sorry. Well, we can do it as a committee and you can have this planning board's member support on your, on your petition.
But we did get pushback from the select board when we, because didn't this come up as a discussion? I wonder, weren't they?
We'll kick back over about this idea from this board. I thought, didn't we bring this up in the joint? And wasn't there?
I, I think Angela's, I think Angela's correct. I think that, you know, I, I actually think strongly, and I'm not speaking for Angela now, that it's premature to ask for an RFP because it's too vague, so it's nice to have a statement that says parking won't get in the way, but unless someone's gonna put that in writing and indemnify a developer, no one wants to spend the time or effort to really go through the motions of figuring out what to do with it. So if there's a modification to zoning, to me, it would actually become a more narrow use, very specific to what the town would like to see it, to see that property developed as. But the parking is the thing that has to get addressed. So if there's a get out of jail free card on parking and a very narrow that you find use, then I think people would step up to the plate. But I think to say right now, hey, there's, there's four flavors of choose your own adventure, but none of them actually solve the parking problem unless you're prepared to buy some of budding properties that may or may not be for sale. Nobody's gonna do that.
Yeah, but you're not gonna get zoning changes with no parking.
But tell me how you, tell me how you redevelop that property.
So Scott, but so we're, we have to think about the fact that that's why special permits exist. And as much as we try and lower the bar for a special permit, with, if we change, let's say we change the I zone to not require any parking, then that has to apply not just to this parcel, it has to apply to everything in the I zone. And so when you take that to town.
You create a new, you create a new zone for only that parcel so that you don't.
Yeah, you clearly can't do that. That's why, so, so that's the quandary we're in.
So it'd be like all of those problems.
Plus, we could, we could lift parking requirements for the HMRD. But, but you know, the problem isn't, the problem is not zoning. The problem is you have a building and trying to sell it doesn't have any parking. But we have miles, but we have miles and miles and miles of auto infrastructure that have plenty of space for parking all over.
So, but you've also been on the side of projects that try to minimize the amount of parking and the the communication you get from the community when you're the developer trying to like, no, I'm near mass transit, we're gonna call this a transit oriented development, we don't need parking. People scream and they say, that's not realistic, everyone has a car, you need to prepare for cars, I don't want people parking, you know, in front of my house, so. So we do, I think Scott's right, we have to figure out what the middle ground is, but it, it is gonna be tied to the use and unfortunately, Scott, I do think that the special permit is probably the way it has to go, just because of the fact that we can't, we can't zone just the Cook's parcel for no parking.
In line of this time school, it's a special permit. So it's, it's, I mean, it shouldn't be treated as an impossibility to, to a developer who has a, a reuse assessment in their hands, which the town has done. Town has very, um, uh, very progressive zoning in place for this area. Um, in my opinion, all of that sets good groundwork for a developer to come in. irrespective of the parking question, I think a developer with some experience would have some confidence that they could solve that problem in a collaborative approach with the town and with the budding properties. I don't think that's a, um, a brick wall that can't be. It would likely not be the first time with that hypothetical developer would have faced this issue.
Right, right. I have another hypothetical and then a question to ask, um, about next steps. What if the lower level of that building were parking? And then there were housing on top of it? Is that, is that doable? Is that legal?
Sure.
Okay, that's my, okay, thank you. The other question I have is, um, we have a volunteer who has a matterport camera, um, who is willing to go to the site, get in the building if that's possible and shoot the whole interior. Um, is there funding at the town level that could pay for that? Who would we talk to?
Probably the town manager. Or the assistant town manager. Director of the building.
The person, the person is willing to do most of it gratis, but would like some compensation for mileage. So we'll talk. Okay, anybody else have questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I know you guys aren't ready to speak as a committee, but individually, can you say what you would like to see that on?
Yeah, I second that. Well, when the developer gets her funding, no, I'm teasing. Um, personally, I would love to see mixed use with lots of housing. I think this site is just adorable. If you go to White River Junction or you go to, you know, different places in the country that are riverside, everybody's got places that have been changed into housing. Um, and I think that there's real walkability for the site and it's connected to the sidewalks that go into the village. I just think it would be terrific. Beth?
Yeah, I agree with Angela. I think that would be good. I've been in town for fifty-six years. I've been waiting for some others, you know. So I think that's, I like it.
Let me go to online, Ben, are you still there? Scott, how about you?
Uh, I, I think the same. I think I'd love to see a, a tall building with lots of housing, uh, affordable and otherwise, uh, with some commercial use on, on the ground level.
Can you define tall?
Zoning does that.
Architecturally appropriate for the area, so if that's forty feet, you know, listen, if it's two stories now and we could fit three under forty feet, I think that'd be great. I mean, when you climb up the rickety old fire escape of the adjacent building and you, and you look around that site, those would be very, very desirable housing units.
Yeah.
Yeah, no question.
I would say, um, you know, I always, when we were doing the Husatonic School, it, um, something like, uh, Bertrand Innovation Center or something, you know, had a possible proposal, but it was in a shift of, uh, of, uh, governors and stuff, so they, they weren't able to secure funding, but, uh, something along those lines where it's, uh, innovation business incubator, something along those lines there. I mean, it just, uh, feels like a pretty creative space. Um, oh, you know, wouldn't complain about mixed, mixed use by any means. Um, if all else fails, uh, there was a long time ago when the HIC was first, uh, started and and Dan Bailey was on, he made a comment about like, if there, if all else failed this project development, that maybe just leave that one riverside wall up, you know, in like a thing and have like a park or there's some sort of memorial to it, like a, a riverwalk up, uh, up one side, you know, and, and it, and it sounded like a pretty good idea here, so I, I would say, you know, and, and it would have a water feature for the kids.
That's what I mean.
I thought this school would have been great for like an innovation.
Um, definitely, definitely.
Can't complain about the housing, but I think.
Our innovation comes working around here.
Yeah.
That's where they're going. I've just seen so many, you know, lose money and fall apart and.
They, from what I can gather, and I'm not fully dove, dove into the one in Pittsfield and North Adams, but it seems like they have the formula that is working.
Yes, yeah.
Site specific. Oh, Ben, um, uh, Randy asked for, no, Pedro asked, um, what our personal feelings are for the use of the former Cook's Garage and you're the only one who hasn't responded.
Sorry. A mild. Um, I, my feelings is I, I, I would love to see it mixed use. That's, that's really, I really think that housing and economic development are the two things we need here in Husatonic. And so I think there's a real opportunity. I know there's lots of obstacles with this project and this property, but I really think that's worth, you know, trying to find a way towards.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ellen.
Is that where you were, you, are you satisfied with why you came here? Did you get what you were looking for?
I think so, yes.
I think it was a good conversation.
Yeah, and, and let, you know, keep talking and just reach out any, any time if you guys get a little deeper in the weeds or like you want to test a couple of ideas, we'd be happy to run through some testing of ideas.
So I would.
Hold on, before you leave, I just want to point out that a mixed use development there would be by right.
Mixed use would be by right.
Okay, good to know.
Alright, carry on. We still need a special permit for the park.
So for the Husatonic Improvement Committee, I entertain a motion to adjourn our part of the meeting.
Uh, so much.
Second. Also, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Nice to meet you and see you. Bye, everybody. Thank you. Bye, Scott and Ben. And don't worry about the terracing stuff, we'll take care of it.
We like to get in stuff.
Alright, so we will move on. We have a subdivision rules and regulations public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the application fee for approval not required plans, preliminary plans and definitive plans. Um, so first thing is, um, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So what, what was this, was this advertised?
So we have a, a motion by Jonathan and a second by Malcolm, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Hi. Right, so the public hearing is now open. Um, Mr. Rumble, do you have a presentation of the proposal?
Yes, just briefly, and, and this was included in the planning board's back end for, for the evening. Staff is looking at these, uh, application fees across the board in, in town for all departments and all boards. Uh, recently, the select board the other night voted to increase its special permit application fee to three hundred fifty dollars from the three hundred. The zoning board of appeals did the same thing on Tuesday night. And, um, I'm hoping that the planning board will do the same thing for special permits. Now, the fees for subdivision related applications to the planning board are contained within your subdivision regulations and in order to change those regulations, uh, uh, you must have a public hearing first and that's what you're deemed uh, here tonight. So the proposal is to amend the subdivision regulations in order to increase the application fees for um, two things. I realize there's three things highly incompatible. Increase for two things. The first is the so-called Form A plan or a subdivision who will not require plan. Currently, the application fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars regardless of the number of lots created. Uh, that fee has been in place since at least two thousand eight, so it's quite stale. Um, staff recommends that be increased from one twenty-five to two hundred. Um, and the reason being is that while there aren't any advertisements or mailings required, there's no cost incurred there. There's certainly staff time required to intake applications and ensure that all the assessors' records and maps are kept up to date before they do reviews. Um, so for that reason, we do, uh, propose an increase to the Form A fee to two hundred. And secondly, a recommended increase of the preliminary plan application fee, uh, which currently is a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred fifty dollars. Um, and that's because, uh, that's a little bit, a higher recommended increase because preliminary plans do require public hearing advertisements in the newspaper, the Berkshire Eagle, which is not getting any cheaper. Um, it's two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five dollars minimum uh, for two, for two advertisements. It also requires mailings to others and postage is, you know. So currently, I would say a preliminary plan comes in and pays a hundred and fifty dollars plus fifty dollars for a lot. The town will be losing money just to meet essential requirements of your own violence, which I believe is, um, not, um, good practice. The staff does recommend an increase there to two hundred fifty dollars for preliminary plan plus fifty dollars for a lot. You know, there's, there's the KDT, uh, for, for average daily traffic, I think around about ten. Highlight, the packet finally is the definitive plan fee. Uh, currently it is five hundred dollars. Um, I highlighted my recommendation to increase it to five hundred dollars. Obviously, this that's a typo there. It should be, it should remain in five hundred dollars. The costs are advertising notices. The costs are essentially the same. Um, and that is the basis of my presentation to you.
So I have a question about formas. What? The formas seem very simple, but what happens with your time that you have to do?
Uh, I should, it's usually a fairly simple intake process. Um, most applicants do email plans ahead of time or come in to discuss the plan um, for compliance, just to see if they're if they're interpreting the bylaw correctly. Um, sometimes you'll see a plan that creates lots that seem conforming as to area, but ends up with a thirty foot wide lot leg that doesn't meet zone and uh, well, could be endorsed as a, as a year of, as a form A, it's not a building block. So developers or or surveyors have these types of questions. And then there's the actual time of the assessor making sure that his paper maps that you so definitely fold every time actually get inputted into the system and all the property record cards get changed when transactions occur.
Uh, okay.
An additional mask.
So stuff happens after.
Yeah, so before and after.
Okay. All right, that's helpful.
Any other questions by the board? All right, hearing none. Any questions from the public?
No, Brandy?
Yes.
We only have the newsletter as the public. Well, I'm, well, I know, and Claudia, but um, and I'm just wondering, is this really, does this meet?
It does, because it was advertised. Yes.
Okay, but we're just not getting any discussion from anybody, but they could have.
It does happen from time to time, but yes, it's true. So as long as we've met the legal requirements for noticing the meeting and advertising.
Which luckily it's not a form.
Big trouble down.
Okay, I just wanted, I mean, it just.
No, it's a, it's a good question.
And I didn't want buddy to carry all the weight.
It's a lot of responsibility.
All right, hearing no um, questions from the board or comments and questions um, from the public. Uh, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Thank you, Jonathan, and seconded by Malcolm. Any discussion? All in favor? Um, is there any discussion, um?
I'm giving them all at once.
Yeah, can we do them as a group or do we need them?
Yeah, I think I think if you entertain a motion, this follows to increase the form A fee to two hundred dollars. Increase the preliminary plan fee to two hundred fifty dollars plus fifty dollars for a lot. And to increase, um.
To maintain, maintain?
Uh, to increase the special permit application fee. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's definitive plan fee to me. Okay.
Isn't it per unit? Fee. You reduced it from a hundred to fifty. I I didn't mean to do that.
So no change on definitive plan. Okay. So do we have a a motion, um, as noted by uh, Chris to amend the A N R P and the preliminary plan fee? Thank you, Jonathan. Can we have a second?
Second.
Second by Malcolm. Any further discussion? Um, and do we have to do a roll call on this or can we just say? Okay, um, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Would the board entertain a motion to increase the site from the inside plan fee as outlined in my memo, special permits to three fifty and site plan one meter. That's a big fifty dollar increase on special permits covering increasing costs. And twenty five dollar increase in site and revenue, which have not changed in thirteen years.
I hate to ask this question, but is this, was this ever, was this included on the agenda?
Yes.
Um, left.
Rules and regulations.
Yeah, we did that.
Oh, that's.
Oh, practically.
It wasn't. Yeah, no, that's a good question, Malcolm.
Oh, can we do that next time?
We can. Yeah, so we'll, we'll take that uh, matter of special permit that's initiating. Okay.
Are there any objections?
No.
Have to advertise this again?
No.
So we'll take that up at our next meeting, um, which is sometime in June.
It's just on their agenda.
Okay, do we have town planners report? No, do we have any board subpoena updates, issues or concerns? No. Yeah.
No.
I'd like to reiterate my concern disappointment about plastic surgeons on State Road. They are the only building on State Road without a door to the street.
They have a door to the street, but it's on the side.
That's not to the street, Jonathan. They don't have a door in the front of the building facing the street.
Pedro, I agree with you.
We rezone that area specifically to increase pedestrian traffic. Now, I know that this is not an overnight change, but if we continue to allow projects to come through this board, get approval from this board and then get built and get the approval, then we on this board are not going to get intended results that we want from all the work that we do. So what is the?
It, I don't want to have discussion about this because it's not on the agenda. So as an issuer concerned, Pedro can read it. Is there anything more? No, Jerry?
So are we going to put this on?
No, because we have no jurisdiction on it.
But but I'm but what I was saying earlier about, so about light, but actually it was more than lighting. I mean, do we, is there a mechanism that we could have?
You're raising a concern.
Discussion, okay, okay. Can we? Can we put it on the agenda? Because I I I, because I want to discuss whether or not whether or not we do have some jurisdiction, if we can call back.
Are you asking about enforcement? Because that's where it goes, it leads us and goes to enforcement.
Um, no.
Okay, you know, we, I think.
But maybe.
Yeah, let's, let's, you and I have a.
Okay, can I, can I just say, I I think it could on the agenda as an item for us to discuss and send a letter if we want to expressing our concerns. So can we just put it on the agenda to to discuss our concerns and see if it's appropriate for us to communicate with?
We can think about it.
I mean, you're the chairman, you make the agenda, but I I would suggest that.
Yeah, I mean.
We just elected your chairman.
Discussion, I'll make it up.
And because it is a lot, it's a lot of that we, we see it and then we see it in real life and we're like, really? That's what we cannot approve?
Okay, anything else?
No, I have no. No, I don't think so.
Okay, and I don't have anything either. All right, citizen speak? Claudia, do you have anything? Uh, Eileen, anything? All right, hearing no citizen speak, um, we will adjourn without objection at seven fifty. Thank you, everybody. I hope you can go home and hydrate.